All right, I have six o'clock, so I will call this meeting of the Sparks Planning Commission to order. Madam Secretary, can we please call the roll?
Commissioner Cristo.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Andriola.
Present.
Commissioner Carey.
Present.
Commissioner Kramer.
Present.
Commissioner Rossen. Commissioner Reed.
Here.
This is Commissioner Andrew Russell.
Here.
C five, Jerry Russell.
Here.
All right, so we are dismissing Commissioner Rossen. He did inform me he would not be here tonight. So, we will move on to item three. This is our first public comment section. This is a general public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item four, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved. I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Andriola, a second by Commissioner Kramer. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, may we please have a vote?
Commissioner Cristo.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Andriola.
Aye.
Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer.
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen. Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item five, approval of the minutes. We only have one set this week, so looking for a motion to review the possible approval of the minutes of the August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission meeting.
Mister Chair, I've moved to approve, approve the minutes of the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Kramer, second by Commissioner Andriola. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please have a vote?
Commissioner Cristo.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Andriola.
Aye.
Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer.
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen. Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to our public hearing items, beginning with item six, PCN twenty-one dash zero zero two four.
Good evening, Mister Chair, Planning Commissioners. I'm Jonathan Cummins from the Planning Division. This request is for a conditional use permit to establish a twenty-one hundred twenty-seven square foot fitness center in an existing shopping center at the DeAndrea Marketplace. So outlined in red in the exhibit is the parcel in which the tenant space is located. This is the southern portion of the DeAndrea Marketplace Shopping Center. Just for some context, this is Vista Boulevard going north here, and where Bering Boulevard crosses Vista, turns into North DeAndrea Parkway. You'll recall that the northern part of the DeAndrea Marketplace is where the cap indoor storage facility was approved by the Planning Commission last year, and so we're just in the southern portion of that larger shopping center. So the northeast and south of the subject site is the eight hundred sixty-one acre DeAndrea Plan Development, which was approved by the City Council in nineteen ninety-eight. The shopping center is made up of multiple parcels. The subject parcel, again outlined in red here, contains nine tenant spaces, and the parcel itself is one point two seven acres. So, we have another exhibit from the applicant's packet that we provided to the planning commissioners. And just for your orientation, where north is going off to the left here, so this is where Vista Boulevard comes up north to approach the North DeAndrea Parkway and Bering intersection. And so, a point of interest here, this is where the Safeway gas station is, that you might recall if you drive by on Vista. Very often, the Safeway, again here, is the anchor tenant in the shopping center, as well as a major tenant here is the CVS Drugstore. And so, right here in between those, in the midst of several other tenant spaces, is the subject site for the Pure Bar Fitness Center before you this evening. So there's one more image to give you a context of where we are. This is the tenant space. The clock tower facade here is the vacant space where the Pure Bar Facility is requesting to be located. The DeAndrea Marketplace, excuse me, the DeAndrea Plan Development Handbook requires that a fitness center go through the conditional use permit process. The intent there was that a larger gym would have sometimes significant impacts in terms of traffic, circulation, things like that. And so, in order for a fitness center, even a small one like the Pure Bar Facility at a twenty-one hundred square foot size, has to go through the conditional use permit process in order for those impacts to be addressed at a public hearing. So, the twenty-one hundred square foot facility, as we outlined in our staff report for this item, we outlined that there's minimal impacts that we anticipate. Parking will easily be provided by what's existing in the Safeway CVS Shopping Center. The anchor tenant there is a major grocery store, again, which was designed to fit into the site. Impacts associated with that use were mitigated at the time of that entitlement in two thousand and three, and so we anticipate that the proposed use would have minimal impacts on what has already been provided at the shopping center. So, for a conditional use permit, five findings have to be made by the Planning Commission. I'll list them for you here. Finding one is compliance with the comprehensive plan. So staff believes, as we pointed out in our staff report, that the proposed request for the Pure Bar Fitness Facility would support goals MG one, to support economic vitality; goal MG two, to foster diversity in the land use mix; goal MG seven, for responsible growth, which is where we encourage new businesses to occupy established sites rather than expanding into new growth areas; EV one, to grow and diversify the Sparks economy; and goal CF one, to only approve development where city services can be provided. Finding two asks for compatibility with surrounding uses. So again, the subject site is within an established shopping center. Impacts were mitigated at the time of the entitlement for the Safeway CVS site in two thousand and three. No proposed impacts for the Pure Bar Facility are anticipated to affect that compatibility. Nor would the use be anticipated to have impacts on natural resources, as in finding three. Finding four asks us to address any other identified impacts. As we pointed out in our analysis of the parking and traffic figures provided by the applicant's engineer, there are expected to be minimal impacts associated with this particular use. They anticipate that in the AM peak hour, there will be four trips generated by this use, and in the PM peak hour, that there will be nine trips generated. So, very minimal impacts associated with traffic and circulation on the site. And finally, finding number five, public notice given, public hearing held. Staff did send notification via mail to property owners within five hundred feet of the site, published also in the Reno Gazette Journal on August twentieth. We did receive public comment, which we provided to the Planning Commission prior to the meeting. Applicant's representative is here tonight as well, and I'll be glad to take your questions. Staff is recommending approval of this item.
Thank you, Jonathan. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Jonathan, I just wanted to, had a question on the conditional use permit here. If this is approved, would any expansions in the future require an amendment to this special use permit for the proposed use?
In, Mister Chair, if I may, an expansion to the square footage of an approved entitlement would require amending that entitlement.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Chair.
Any other questions? Commissioner Reed, any questions?
No, I don't have any, thank you.
All right, would the applicant like to add anything to the presentation at this time? Okay. This is a public comment, public hearing item, so we will now open public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we will close public comment. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve conditional use permit CU twenty-one dash zero 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 two, to establish a two thousand one hundred and twenty-seven square foot fitness center in an existing shopping center, DeAndrea Marketplace, adopting findings C one through C five, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the three conditions of approval as listed in the staff report.
Thank you. Is it any second?
A second.
All right, we have motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Andriola. Any final discussion? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I think staff did a good job with this one, and I concur with the recommendation. I agree, the intent behind the handbook was really looking at large-scale fitness centers, you know, more than twenty-one hundred square feet than we're looking at now. And I think that there's, you know, did a good job addressing the identified impacts, and I will be supporting the motion. I think, I'll just throw it out there for the sake of keeping it in the back of staff's head, is, I think if we, if we look, if we ever get in a position where the city's looking at an amendment to the DeAndrea Handbook, it may be worth consideration of changing, changing up the handbook to allow a fitness center within the commercial area, like less than four thousand square feet, you know, wouldn't require a conditional use permit. But appreciate staff's work on this one, and the parking analysis was really helpful, so, thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Kramer.
I appreciate staff's work on this as well, and I appreciate the fact that there is another spot in that particular area that is being taken and is not going to be vacant again. There's been several spots, that particular area, or that particular one area, has been turned over several times in the last several years, over and over and over again. So I wish good luck to Pure Bar and continued success in that particular space, and good luck. I will be supporting this motion as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Reed, anything to add?
No, nothing to add, thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion, we've had a motion by Commissioner West, a second by Commissioner Andriola. May we please have a vote? Aye.
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 Commissioner Reed.
Oh, I, sorry, I didn't hear her. Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. We will move on then to PCN zero nine zero one one. I believe that is also Jonathan.
Good evening, Mister Chair, Planning Commissioners. Jonathan Cummins from the Planning Division. This is a request to amend the special use permit associated with the original twenty thousand four hundred and two square foot Peterbilt facility at twenty-two seventy-two Larkin Circle in the I, or Industrial Zoning District. The Peterbilt facility is outlined in red in the exhibit. Just for some context of where we are, we're just south of the train tracks here and the interstate. These are the eastern city limits here that are run along the Truckee River. Truckee River Green Belt is between the river and the proposed location. And so again, we're on Larkin Circle, which is right here off Greg Street, as Greg approaches the freeway and turns into Vista Boulevard. So the site is seven point zero eight acres in total. In two thousand and nine, the main Peterbilt facility was established through a conditional use permit for just over twenty thousand square feet, and in two thousand thirteen, just over twelve thousand square feet were added to that facility, and so the proposed site plan will give you an idea of what I'm talking about here. So this is the existing, the original, excuse me, Peterbilt facility, constructed through that special use permit which was approved in two thousand and nine, and in two thousand thirteen, the twelve thousand square foot space here was constructed, I'm, excuse me, two thousand thirteen, did I say that? Was constructed here, and the proposed twenty-four thousand square foot addition is outlined in orange here. So in our initial review of the request, we evaluated the architectural standards required in the Industrial Zoning District, parking and circulation standards, as well as other features on the site as it exists today, in order to meet, for instance, the landscaping requirement in the industrial district, which is to have a ten-foot landscaping buffer along street frontages for all properties in the zoning district. Staff found that each of those components of our review was satisfied at the time of the request. The property is in the floodplain, so our engineers did have to do some work in crafting conditions of approval that will be designed to ensure that the development will meet FEMA and local regulations for development in the floodplain. And another issue that came about in our analysis and in our research on the request was the adjacency to the Truckee River corridor here. So again, the Truckee River runs along here, east of the site, and in between the river and the parcel lines here is the Truckee River Green Belt, which is a space that the city maintains along the river. So that path is slightly elevated at this site, and based on that, the code does require that there be partial screening to reduce visual impact. And so, one of the conditions of approval that you may have noticed in the staff report will be that, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant will provide a landscaping plan which will demonstrate that they have accomplished that partial screening to reduce visual impact along the Green Belt area. And finally, again, as I mentioned, we did review the architecture in our initial review, and I would draw your attention to the elevation on the bottom here. This is from the north, so this is what the facility would look like from the freeway. So the Industrial Zoning District has design guidelines which ensure that there are articulation breaks along the vertical and horizontal planes in industrial design. They've accomplished that here. You'll see the, this right along here, up to this point, will be the expansion. So, what they've provided here for us is more than what exists today, which is basically the back of a metal building from the freeway, will now have more of a articulated design which will show off that the Peterbilt facility is located there, but also provide us those design standards which we require now in the Industrial Zoning District. So as with the previous case, we have five findings to make for a conditional use permit. Finding one, compliance with the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that the request meets goals MG one for economic vitality, goal MG two, to maintain the area south of I eighty for industrial and commercial users, goal MG three, to maintain land for employment generating uses, goal EV one, to grow and diversify the Sparks economy, and goal CF one, that new development would take place only in locations where services can be provided by the city. Finding two, compatibility with surrounding uses. This use is surrounded, again as I said, by the interstate to the north, to the Truckee River to the east, and then various other auto and truck repair facilities to the south and to the west in the Larkin Circle area. So again, because of the adjacency to the river, the applicant will be required to provide a landscaping buffer that will reduce the visual impact of the facility on that Green Belt area in order to accommodate the requirement for compatibility with surrounding uses again. And once more, the Green Belt is adjacent to the site, so visual impacts will be considered in the required landscape buffer. Otherwise, engineering has also proposed conditions of approval so that requirements of FEMA, as well as local requirements for development in the floodplain be addressed. Our engineers will also be asked to review the Green Belt buffer to ensure that whatever is proposed by the applicant to provide that landscape screening is something that is acceptable in the floodplain, because again, that's a sensitive matter that has to be considered by our engineering team. Finding four asks you to address other identified impacts. Parking was analyzed by the applicant's engineer. They did determine that, at the time of the original two thousand and nine entitlement, the use was anticipated to generate approximately seventy peak hour trips per day. And so, with more accurate data available to us all these years later, they've determined that even with the expansion, the site will actually only generate about sixty-three trips, sixty-three peak hour trips per day. So the numbers are more accurate, and that's again, below the eighty peak hour threshold for any further study of traffic. And again, in terms of identified impacts, floodway and green belt concerns have been addressed in the conditions of approval. Again, those will be reviewed and approved by your city engineer and your development services manager at the time that the landscape plan is provided to the city prior to the issuance of a building permit. And public notice given, public hearing held. Property owners within five hundred feet were notified of this item via mail, and notification was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on August twentieth. We did receive some public comment on this one as well, which has been provided to the planning commissioners prior to the meeting. Applicants' representatives are here, and I'll be glad to take your questions as well, and staff is recommending approval of this item.
Thank you again, Jonathan. All right, any questions for staff? Mister Carey.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Jonathan, I was curious about the landscaping requirements to buffer along the Green Belt area, and I appreciate condition number ten. What would have to be done in order to comply with that, those buffering standards? What kind of landscaping are you looking for?
Well again, as we pointed out in the staff report, the language of that piece of our code is subjective. It does ask for visual screening, and even more so in this particular zone, because it's not directly adjacent to the river, but it's within a certain number of feet, two hundred, is what the code specifies, within two hundred feet that there, anything where the trail is elevated adjacent to that site, which in this case it is, that that site will have to have partial screening provided by a landscape buffer. And so, again, that's a subjective thing, and that we'll be reviewing that when that landscape plan is proposed to us. And again, since we are in the floodplain, and this is a landscape plan that we'll have to ask for the involvement of our engineering team as well, because while we will be looking for trees to be provided there, to give us that buffer, we have to make sure that those trees are appropriate to be planted in the floodplain adjacent to various other, you know, industrial users. And so there's some issues there that will be addressed when that's submitted to the city for review.
Follow-up, if I may, Mister Chair? Thank you. Okay, I appreciate that. Because I think with, you know, one thing that does a good job of buffering along the Green Belt, and I know we have the Tahoe Pyramid Bike Way that runs along this property, and I know there's a real need for trees along this area of the river, and I guess what I was kind of looking at was, I'd like to see more trees along the river. I think there's a lot of good stuff that comes along with that, from habitat to wildlife benefits and maybe water quality too. But I understand what you're saying about the, it's also in the floodplain, if we put more trees in. In terms of condition number ten, is there a kind of standard that staff looks for in terms of the number of trees? Is it like one two-inch tree for every ten foot of frontage along the Green Belt, or is it just completely staff's call?
There's not a specific piece of language there that says exactly the caliper of tree or the height of the tree, but I would reiterate what the language says exactly in the code. So on sites where the Green Belt path is elevated from the site in question, that partial, that there will be partial screening to reduce visual impact. So not full screening to eliminate visual impact, but partial screening to reduce it to the extent possible. And so in that case, I think to your point, it would require trees as opposed to shrubs or bushes that probably wouldn't accomplish much screening from an elevated path. So in that case, again, it is subjective. It doesn't require a certain kind of tree or a certain height of tree, but it does require that that partial screening be provided in order for us to approve that landscape plan.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Mister Chair.
All right, any other questions? Commissioner Reed, any questions?
No, not at this time, thank you.
All right, would the applicant like to make a statement or add anything at this time?
We just appreciate staff's work on this, and...
If you want to come down here. And then just state your name for the record.
Good evening, Gabe Whitler, Odyssey Engineering, applicant. We also have an owner's representative and a project architect here as well, if you have any questions for us. And just like to state that we appreciate staff's work on this project, and we have reviewed and understand the conditions and concur with them as proposed, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, Commissioner Reed, any questions for the applicant?
No questions.
All right, thank you. So this is also a public hearing item, so we will now open public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner Carey.
I'll lead us off. Thank you, Mister Chair. Yeah, I think staff did a good job on this one as well too, and I concur with the analysis and recommendations. I really particularly appreciate the reference in the staff report and concur that I think this project will advance policy MG three, which is to maintain areas for employment generating uses, and I think that this proposed expansion will do that. I guess where I was going in terms of my questioning on the condition number ten and the landscaping, I'd like to see, I'll just throw this out for the record, when staff sees the building permit, if this is approved, I'd like to see as many trees as possible along this corridor. I think that'll help provide the buffering that's needed, but also provide some much-needed shade and habitat that's needed along this Green Belt corridor. I don't think we need to go in and, I thought about maybe amending condition number ten to maybe kind of throw out, hey, build more trees, or, but I think staff gets it, and I think hopefully with my comments on the record here, can kind of reiterate the point to the extent practical that we can have as many trees to help provide that buffering along the Green Belt there.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Mister Chair, I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve CU twenty-one dash zero 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 three, amending special use permit SP zero nine zero zero one, associated with PCN zero nine zero one one, to allow a twenty-four thousand six hundred square foot expansion to an existing twenty thousand four hundred and two square foot building, adopting findings C one through C five, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the ten conditions, approval as listed in the staff report.
All right, thank you.
I'll second that motion, Mister Chair.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Andriola, a second by Commissioner Kramer. Any final discussion? Commissioner Reed, any final discussion?
None for me.
All right, so seeing none, then may we have a vote? Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. Thanks again, Jonathan. We will now move on to PCN twenty-one dash zero zero two two, which is also Jonathan.
Good evening, Mister Chair. Planning Commissioners, Jonathan Cummins from the Planning Division. This is a request to amend the Final Plan Development Handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase Five. This property is located just east of Pyramid Way, south of the Lazy Five Regional Park. The Phase Five site is outlined in red here, but stepping back a little bit, the area outlined in blue is the entire eight hundred seventy-four acre Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. And just to give you an idea of where we are, Pyramid Way is running along the western side of Kylie Ranch North. Just to the north of the site is the Lazy Five Regional Park, to the northeast is the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development, and then Kylie Ranch South down here. So the original tentative handbook for Kylie Ranch North was approved by the City Council in two thousand and four, as you may recall from previous items. Kylie Ranch North is relatively unique in our plan developments in that it was approved through a tentative handbook, which then is implemented in phases, each of those phases requiring the adoption of a final handbook. So the Phase Five handbook was originally adopted in two thousand and nine, and it involves the area outlined in the black outline here. So there are six villages here that are business park and two that are medium-high residential. So Village Ten B and Eleven B are these two yellow pieces here. These are the medium-high residential. These were once not included in the Phase Five, but they were relocated into it to accommodate the school sites, which are just outside to the south here. So on the eastern of these two bright blue parcels here is the Sky Ranch Middle School, and to the west of that is the Bo Hatch Elementary School. And so in order to accommodate those pieces to be added into the Kylie Ranch North land use plan, as well as to make the amendment to the comprehensive plan at that time, those residential villages were moved into the Phase Five area. So those changes were made in the tentative handbook update of two thousand and sixteen, and since then, the Phase Five handbook had not been amended in order to reflect those changes, so that's what we're here doing today. So again, the Village Ten B and Eleven B are medium-high residential. Those sites require a residential density of twelve to seventeen point nine dwelling units per acre, and those make up twenty, just over twenty-two acres. Additionally, there is ten point eight six acres of open space, and that's outlined in green here, and this is partially the Orditch Linear Park, which runs north to south here. And just underneath the black line here is additional landscape, excuse me, open space buffer between Phase Five and the Lazy Five Regional Park. And the remaining eighty-two point four acres are business park, and these are six parcels that are designated business park, and there is an existing facility here, the Bolimo Manufacturing Facility, right there in that village, and outside of that are undeveloped business park parcels. So the point worth making here, the reason I kind of give the background on the villages is that these villages, these land uses, were established at the two thousand and sixteen tentative handbook amendment, and so what we're doing is we're cleaning up the Phase Five handbook in order to reflect those changes, and ultimately to make Phase Five conform with the tentative handbook and with the comprehensive plan, because at this point, with the handbook being slightly outdated, it doesn't necessarily conform with those guiding documents. So ultimately, to summarize before we move into the findings, the request is to add in not only the residential villages, but also to update the language of the business park land use. Previously to two thousand and sixteen, there was office business park and business park, and there were two different land uses that had slightly different permitted uses and development standards, and at that two thousand and sixteen update to the tentative handbook, those two categories were merged. merged into one. And so today, that's referred to as business park. And the Phase 5 amendment will be to make sure that those parcels outlined here, these purple villages, will have that designation and will comply in order for future development to take place there. So as I said, there are some findings we have to go through. There are 10 in total for the modification of an approved final plan. Finding one requires consistency with the comprehensive plan. The proposed changes are intended to bring Phase 5, as I said, into conformance with the tentative handbook, which was evaluated in 2016 with these specific changes for conformance with the comprehensive plan. And also, at that time, to make the land use changes in those villages and the different land use categories that were applied to them, which were outlined in the land use plan, which was part of the comprehensive plan update at that time as well. Number two, consistency with surrounding uses. The business park category was established at this particular part of Kylie Ranch North to serve as a buffer between the residential properties that are to the east and the Pyramid Corridor, as well as to provide a buffer between the more commercial uses to the south, which are community commercial and arterial commercial, and the Lazy 5 Regional Park to the north. So the business park land use here essentially serves as, as a buffer in two ways there in the overall scope of what Kylie Ranch is, is designed to accomplish. Finding number three, that the request be fiscally positive to the city. At the time of the 2016 tentative handbook update, these changes specifically were evaluated for their fiscal impacts, and no changes in the current request to that fiscal impact analysis, which was approved in 2016. Number four, that the request would further the mutual interest of owners and residents. The proposed plan actually brings the final handbook into conformance with the tentative handbook. So we're providing current owners with land use standards that are more in line with what has been anticipated since that tentative handbook update, and also brings potential users into, into conformance with what is allowed there currently through the tentative handbook. Finding number five, that the request not impair reliance on the plan. Again, as I said, there is one existing commercial facility, the Bolimo Facility located in Phase 5. That business, as well as any other property owners, will not be affected by these changes. These changes have already been implemented. And again, the Phase 5 update is in order to bring future development into compliance with what is anticipated in the Phase 5 area. Finding number six, that the request not adversely affect the public interest. So again, updating the language of the currently adopted business park land use area and adding the residential villages that were already adopted in the tentative handbook, neither of these would be affected by the proposed changes, and the, neither would be expected to have any effect on the public interest. Finding seven, that the request be consistent with the development of the entire plan development. Proposed amendment is specifically intended to comply with those updates to the tentative handbook from 2016 and are therefore intended to support the development of the entirety of Kylie Ranch North. Finding eight, that the request not adversely affect the enjoyment of surrounding land. Changes are intended to clean up a final handbook that requires updating and will have no material impact on enjoyment of land. Again, the change is proposed to conform with what currently exists in the tentative handbook land use plan and has been adopted by the City Council. Finding nine, that the request not be granted to confer private benefit to any individual. Changes to the handbook requested today would apply to all property owners within the Phase 5 area, and therefore not intended to benefit any individual. Finding 10, public notice given and public hearing held. We did receive public comment on this item as well, which was provided to the commissioners before the hearing this evening. All property owners within Kylie Ranch North Phase 5 were noticed by mail, by staff, as well as anyone owning property within 750 feet of the property or of the Phase 5 area. Publication was made on August 18th in the Reno Gazette Journal. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council on this item, and I'll be glad to take your questions.
Okay. Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Reed, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Would the applicant like to make a statement?
Good evening. For the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation. I think Jonathan did a great job. This is really a housekeeping type item for us, so we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, I was just curious. I, I concur with you. I think it's, this is a cleanup handbook. And I was just curious about the difference between the old office business park land use and the current business park land use in this, in this code. Is it just as simple as a name change? Is there anything materially different from those, those land use categories?
Yeah, the old designations were a little odd, to be honest with you. They essentially were very similar. But what we did is we essentially folded the uses that were allowed in office business park into business park. So that added the ability to do office anywhere within the business park area. And other than that, the uses were very similar in nature. So.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Reed, any questions?
No questions.
All right. Thank you very much. This is also a public hearing item. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none, we will close public comment. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I will make the motion. I move forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council of PCN 21-0022, a request to amend the Final Plan Development Handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase 5.
Thank you. Any second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Kramer, second by Commissioner West. Any final discussion? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three for three tonight, Jonathan. Good job. I concur with this one as well, too, and your recommendation. Yeah, I think it's important when the Kylie Ranch North handbook was originally approved by the city, it was envisioned to be a really critical component to our comprehensive plan and really for the financial future of, of the city. This is kind of three meetings in a row. I keep harking about that. But I believe that this, this proposed handbook does maintain those employment generating uses, does support policy MG3, and will allow for this development to be further in compliance with our comprehensive plans. I'll be supporting the motion and just want to put those on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other discussion? Commissioner Reed, any final discussion?
None for me. Thank you.
All right. So we had a motion by Commissioner Kramer, second by Commissioner West. May we please have a vote?
Commissioner Prickla?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrela?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jonathan. I think you are now done for the evening. So we will move on to general business. So there is nothing for item nine, so we'll move to item 10, which is our final public comment section. Does anyone wish to speak? All right. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Move on to item 11. Announcements from staff and commissioners. We'll start with staff. Any announcements, Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff has coordinated, I believe, with each of the commissioners to plan a study session for what would be our regularly scheduled second meeting in September to train on a new agenda system. The City Council is currently utilizing a system that is more electronic. It will require some training on the behalf of the Planning Commission to learn how to use the devices that will, will be provided, making motions, and how staff reports will, will come to you. So that's, training has been set, and we'll see the Planning Commission on Tuesday at, at noon.
That's the 12th, right?
Correct.
All right. Excellent. Looking forward to that.
The 14th. I think.
Is it the, is it the 14th?
The 13th is a Monday, so it's the 14th.
Yep, you're right. I don't know a date as anymore.
There won't necessarily be any packet or provided, but there'll be an agenda because it will be a public meeting because it's a quorum of the Planning Commission. But again, there won't be a packet necessarily. There's no staff reports associated with it. It's an opportunity for the Planning Commission to get trained on this. I believe that we will be hosting it in this room, not the downstairs training room, because the devices will be in here, and you'll get to see how it actually will work in here.
All right. Thank you. Looking forward to that. Any other announcements? Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to throw it out there. Registration is now open for the 2021 Nevada State Planning Conference, which is going to be held in downtown Reno, October 18th through the 21st. So check out the Nevada APA chapter for more information and how to, how to register. It's going to be a really good conference. And just wanted to wish everyone a happy Labor Day, and I'm glad the smell of ribs is back in downtown Sparks.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other announcements? Commissioner Reed, any announcements?
No announcements. I'm gonna feel sorry for myself, though, if I don't get to go to the rib cook-off this year.
That would be a tragedy. All right.
Yes, it would.
If we will move on to item 12, which is adjournment. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Can we get a vote?
Commissioner Prickla?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrela?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.